Good evening. My name is TJ Sibler. I'm the Director of the Office of Management Budget for DeKalb County. Tonight is the second public hearing on the proposed 2022 millage rates for the county tax, property taxes. So I want to give you just a little bit of what the format will be for this hearing and then we'll, we'll get right into it. So I'll start off with a presentation of the millage rates as well as provide some background on property taxes and some of the terms that I'll be using as well. And we'll go through that and I'll try to get through it as efficiently as possible. Some of this information does get a little bit dense. So I'll try not to rush through it, but I also don't want to take up too much of your time. And once the presentation is over, we'll turn it over to the clerk who will read the rules for the public hearing. I believe there will be 15 minutes allotted for speakers to speak in favor of the budget as well as 15 minutes allotted for speakers to speak against the budget. Madam Clerk can correct me if I misspoke there. But I think with that, we're, we're ready to start with the presentation. So let's dive right in. Okay, so hopefully everyone is seeing my screen now. Should say DeKalb County 2022 millage rates. As I mentioned, this is the second public hearing on the millage rates. The first was held this morning at 10:00 AM. And there will be a third public hearing as well on July 20, or excuse me, July 12th at 10:00 AM. So I wanted to start out by talking about some property tax relief that is provided through our sales tax, which is the long term for it is the equalized homestead auction sales tax. Most times we just refer to it as E host. And what that is, is it's a one penny sales tax that anyone who shops in DeKalb County pays. But then that revenue is then dedicated to providing tax relief, property tax relief for homestead property owners in DeKalb County. And so for 2022, we'll be providing $137 million in property tax relief through the E host credit. And what that will mean for taxpayers is that they'll receive a 100% credit for the countywide millage rates on their property tax bills. And countywide, those are the rates that are charged to every property owner within DeKalb County. They're for the general fund and the hospital fund. On your tax bill, you'll see the general fund referred to as county operations. And we'll go into a little bit more detail about the tax bills later in the presentation. But this, that savings would equal $1,230 for the average homeowner with a fair market value, value of $325,000, which based on the assessments this year, that is the average home value in DeKalb County. The purpose of this, of this hearing is to discuss the rollback rate in the proposed millage rates for 2022. So the state has what's called the taxpayer bill, bill of rights, which requires counties and all local governments to calculate what they call the rollback rate, which that's the rate, the military that would generate the same amount of tax revenue as the previous year, taking into account the assessments, reassessments, any increase in the assessed value of, of properties throughout the county. So when we went through that calculation this year, we came up with a rollback rate of 8.838 mils. And so that would be below the rate that was charged last year, but it would generate the same amount of money as what we, we collected last year due to the higher assessments this year. Our proposal is for 9.464 as the total rate, and that's for the general fund and the hospital fund, which are the only two funds that the rollback rate really applies to. And because that exceeds the rollback rate, we are required to hold three public hearings and to publish a notice of property tax increase for going beyond the rollback rate. So what I want to know here though is the 9.464, that is the same millage rate combined for the general and hospital fund as what was levied in 2021. So the millage rate is not going up. What will be going up is the assessments, which might lead to a larger tax bill, depending on your circumstances. All right. So I've already mentioned the general fund and the hospital fund millage rates, but there are a total of six active property tax millage rates. That depending on whether you're in an unincorporated area or in one of the cities, you would pay some combination of those six. If you're in an unincorporated area, you would pay all six. And then depending on which city you're in and which services they've opted into with the county, that determines what your other rates are that you would pay. So those other rates are for our police fund, our fire fund, our designated services fund. This is two bond funds, but it's really just one at this point. One of those is we retired all the debt on it. So we have not had a millage rate for that for the last several years. And when you combine all those millage rates, so the police, the fire designated and the unincorporated bond rate with the general fund rate in the hospital fund rate, the total millage rate for an unincorporated resident is 20.81 mils. And that's the same amount, total amount for the millage rate as last year. And it's the same amount that it's been since 2015. Okay, now I'm getting more into just sort of a general overview FAQs about property tax and hopefully trying to explain some of the terminology that I'm, I'll be using. So the first thing is the millage rate. What that is, is really just your tax rate for ad valorem or property taxes. An ad valorem tax is just a fancy way to refer to property taxes. It just means that the taxes is based on the value of a property. And a millage rate is expressed in mils. And so what that means is one mil for each mil of the millage rate is equal to $1 for each $1,000 in the assessed value of properties. All right. Another term that you'll probably hear me use is the tax digest. And the tax digest is really just the aggregate combined values of all taxable property within the county. And so that's what is used in the calculation of the rollback rates. That's what determines, you know, it's, it's looking at all the assessed property assessments throughout the county and totaling those up is what's referred to as the tax digest. And when you get your, your property tax bill, what you'll notice is that there's a fair market value, which is the what the property appraisal department has determined, you know, your, your home is worth the fair market value of it. But then the, the taxes are at the assessed value, which is 40% of the fair market value. Then when we're talking about the tax digest, we'll refer to both the gross tax digest and the net tax digest. And the gross tax digest is that 40% value for all properties added together. That the net text digest is that amount, the gross tax digest minus all exemptions, which that's really the number that's used to determine, you know, what the revenue is from the, from the millage rates. Okay. Another thing that we'll be going over is some of the exemptions that property owners may qualify for. The most basic is the just basic homestead exemption, which what that is, is a $10,000 exemption against the taxable value of your home. And you may apply for a homestead exemption if you own and occupy your home as your primary residence on January 1st year in which the exemption is being claimed. So this one doesn't require any, there are no age or income requirements. What you do need to make sure though, is that you have applied for the homestead exemption. And the deadline for application for the homestead exemption is April 1st of each year. Okay. For anyone that has the basic homestead exemption, they also would qualify for the property assessment freeze exemption. And so what that is, is another exemption that basically offsets the tax liability for any properties that applies to that arise from increased property assessments. So what that means is if you bought your house at a certain value and then over the years it's appreciated and that value has gone up in your tax bills, you will receive a credit or an exemption on your county taxes equal to the amount of taxes that would have resulted from those reassessments. And so the way that that's calculated is it takes that first year that the freeze was applied. And that's what's called your base year. And then it looks at what the current year value of the property is, takes the difference between that and says, okay, this would result in X dollars of tax liability. And that's the amount of the exemption you receive. And again, I think that'll be a little bit clearer when we look at the property tax bill. One thing I'll mention as well with the property tax assessment freeze is when you, anyone who applies for a homestead exemption and is granted one, a new one, will also receive the freeze exemption. But I do want to point out that if you had at home an existing homestead exemption and you'd lived in your home since from 2007 or before, you may need to apply separately for the freeze. So I'll show you again, when we look at the tax bill, how to determine if you have the freeze or whether you would need to apply for that. Okay. And going back now to the E host. So that also appears as an exemption on your tax bill. And it applies to the county operations or general fund in the hospital millage rates. And as I mentioned before, that's a 100% credit for 2022 off those two millage rates. Okay, let's see if this works. Give me just one second. This is property tax bill, an actual property tax bill where I've removed any of the personal information about it. But I just wanted to show you what the tax bill looks like and where everything appears on the tax bill and hopefully I've give you all a better understanding of how your tax bill is, is structured and what you're really paying for. So the first thing you'll see up here is, you know, all the information about the property and that's what I've removed from this bill, followed by the appraisal values and exemption information. So when I spoke about the fair market value, that's here as the total appraisal. So this is for a single family home that's in the unincorporated area of DeKalb. This is a 2021 tax bill. So the value in 2021 was $239,100. Next below that is the 40% assessment. So the assessed value is really just 95,640. And the appeal assessment would be if you had appealed your property tax assessment and that would be the amount that I, you'd be charged at until the appeal was settled. There was no appeal here. So that number is zero. The next column has your exemption code. So, and you'll have to go to, well, if you go to the, the property tax or property tax commissioner's website, excuse me. They have all the exemptions and the codes and what they stand for there. But this one is just the basic homestead plus the freeze. So the H1 is the basic homestead exemption. And then if there's an F at the end of it, that means that the freeze exemption is also applied. And right below here, you have the base assessment freeze, which is 99,160. So that is the frozen assessment value from the base year that it was applied. And then below that is the net frozen exemption. And so in this case it's zero. And that's because the current year's assessment is below the base year. So there's no exemption applied. But if it were to be higher than that year, there would be, you know, the amount of what that exemption would be right here on this line. Okay. Moving further down, you have the actual calculation of the, the tax liability. And you'll see, it'll say taxing authorities here. And depending again on where you live in the county, everyone will have some county taxes, followed by a subtotal. You'll have your school taxes, which could be county schools, or they could be city schools if you're in the city of Decatur or city of Atlanta. And then you have some other taxes, state taxes. Excuse me. And other, these are not exactly taxes, but they're assessments, you know, for your sanitation services, stormwater utility and streetlight utility. And then as you go across, you'll see how that, you know, what the assessment is or how those, what units you're being billed on for each of those subcategories. Right? That's followed by the various militaries for all of the different tax districts. So you'll see county operations, hospitals, county bonds and so forth. Excuse me. Give me just one moment. All right. I apologize for that. So um, those are the millage rates and you'll see here that they're already basically presented as a decimal. So if we were talking about how many mills each one of these is, this is actually 9.108 mils. Because you would take this number and multiply it by 1,000 to get the mill. All right. So the assessment times the millage gives you your gross tax amount. And then the next section gives you your exemption. So if there was a, yeah, again, if this property had appreciated beyond the base year, there'd be a frozen exemption listed here in this column. Something important to note is that the assessment freeze applies for county taxes. It does not apply to school taxes though. Some of the cities also have an assessment freeze, but that depends on which city you're in as well. The next column is just the, this is the basic homestead exemption. And so the way that works is it's based on $10,000, you know, a standard $10,000 exemption for homestead properties. So that's just $10,000 times the millage rate gives you this exemption here. And this last column or second to last column is showing the E host credit. So in this case, E host credit for the county operations is $780. And for the hospital, that's $30.49. So a total of eight, eight 1050. And again, that's going to depend on what the value of your home is. So if you have a higher value home, then that, that number is going to increase, but everyone receives 100% or will receive 100% for those two funds on their 2022 tax bill. And if you go to the final column, you can see the net tax due. And you'll notice on the county operations and the hospitals, the total due is zero. So after the exemptions and the host, E host credit, the total liability for those taxes is zero to the county. Then you come down and it'll total up the other millage rates for the county as well as the schools. If you have city taxes, they'll be listed in this column as well. Unless you live in the city of Decatur, which that's built separately. And then the other subtotal followed by the total tax due. Okay. And then at the very bottom, your property taxes are due in two installments. So you have half of it due. The first installment's due at the end of September and the other half is due mid-November. The property tax bills typically go out early August. Okay. Moving on back to the presentation now. Hopefully you all have a better understanding of property taxes in general. And now we'll get into some of the specifics about the proposed millage rates. So this table shows all the millage rates that are being proposed by the various funds as well as by the taxing, the tax district you live in. So by that, I mean unincorporated or any of the cities. And then down at the bottom, it totals what that millage rate is for the county, for each of the various districts. So this is where you'll see that the 20.81 total for the unincorporated area is the same as what it's been in previous years. Okay. And this slide is just showing the change from 21 to 22. So again, unincorporated is unchanged. Atlanta's unchanged. There are some slight changes here, but just based on some of the fluctuations in the individual millage rates for the different services. And again, that's going to depend on which services your city participates in from the county. And then that's broken down here as well, what the changes are in those millage rates for the unincorporated areas. So you'll see that there's some changes between the individual funds, but the total remains that 20.81. And I also want to mention, if you're in one of the cities, and let me go back to the previous slide, I'll be able to show you there. The millage rates that you pay for really the designated services, which is parks and roads and drainage, as well as the police services. If your city participates in that, in most cases you pay a reduced millage rate compared to what the unincorporated resident would pay. All right. This is just showing some of the progress, you know, where we are currently in the budget year as far as expenditures and these are for the tax funds. And what we want to show here is that through through May of this year compared to last year, our expenditure rate has gone down 4.3%, 4.3%. All right. And this slide is showing the history of the tax digest and how those values have changed. Going back to 2015. And so these blue bars are the gross tax digest and the green are the net. So again, the gross is the 40% value of all assessed, of all taxable property. And then the, the green, the net is that amount less exemptions. And what you can kind of get from this chart is that that gap between the net and the gross has grown over time. And that's largely due to that assessment freeze exemption. So as property values increase, if you have that freeze, the actual value that you're being charged or you're being billed on remains lower than the, the total increase. Right? This is the annual percentage change in the, the tax digest. So you will see that in the last year, it's been considerably higher than what it has been in the past. But again, there's a quite a gap between what the, the growth in the gross digest and the net digest. So historically over this same time period, typically the, the gross has grown 9%. And the net has grown 7.6%. So only a difference of 1.4%. And you can see it's much higher in 2022. All right. And this slide just shows the ending fund balance for the tax funds. And so this is the amount of the budget that wasn't spent at the end of the year each year. So sometimes you'll hear references to the rainy day fund or, you know, other reserves. That's what this is. And so you'll, you can see from 2010, we were actually in the negative. That was at the depths of the great recession. And we've rebuilt that now to up over almost $150 million, which is roughly two months of operating expenses, which is the, the level we're trying to, to maintain. Okay. This is the timeline for the, it says mini year budget, but really for the millage rate adoption. So the first public hearing was this morning at 10:00 and the second one is what's going on right now. Then we'll have another ad in the paper, really in two days about the tax digest and the millage rates, as well as announcing the other, the third public hearing, which will take place July 12th during the BOC regular meeting. So it starts at 10:00 AM, the public hearing portion of it does. And then finally, the tentative date for the tax digest mission to the department revenue is July 28th. And so that's the process that will allow us to send out property tax bills. All right. So a copy of this presentation will be available on our website, which the address is right here. Also provided some links to other county websites, other departments. So the property appraisal website is here. If you have any, any questions or you're looking for information about your property values, that's the best resource for you. And then information about paying your taxes as well as the exemptions can be found on the tax commissioner website. Just here. And finally, you have my email address. If there are additional questions that I didn't cover in this presentation, feel free to send me an email and I'll, I'll try to respond to you. All right. So that's the end of the, my presentation. So I think I will turn it over to Madam Clerk now to read the rules for the public hearing.
You need to unmute Madam Clerk.
Can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Sanders. I think you have two things on. Can you turn one of them off? We're hearing an echo.
Okay. All right. Is that better?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay. 6:00 PM public hearing. DeKalb County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on June 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference Zoom. Simultaneous public access to the meeting will be available, one via live stream on VCTV's webpage and two, VCTV channel 23.tv. The public is invited to watch the broadcast on VCTV's Ustream link. Hyphen HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash video dot IBM dot com. Forward slash channel forward slash VCTV hyphen channel hyphen 23. Join the meeting using the Zoom link. HTTPS colon forward slash DeKalb County GA dot zoom dot US forward slash J forward slash 7753778046. Or by telephone 602-333-0032 or 888-270-9936. Conference code 217687. For those joining the meeting by telephone, please be aware that your phone number may be displayed to the public viewing or participating in the online meeting. The board will provide 15 minutes of time for citizens to speak in favor of an item and 15 minutes for citizens to speak in opposition. Citizens who attend the meeting via the Zoom link above may join the public comment queue by raising their hand in the Zoom application. While citizens who attend the meeting via telephone may join the comment queue by pressing hash, hashtag followed by two, I'm sorry. There will be no comment cards. So when you are called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Also, please be conscious of speaking time so that everyone has an opportunity to provide input in the allotted time. Citizens may also email documents for inclusion into the official record by submitting such material that, well, that doesn't apply to this public hearing. That completes the requirements for public hearing.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And as a reminder, right now, this part of the timeframe for public comment is for those in favor of this millage rate as it stands. So I will in favor of this millage rate uh as it stands. So I will, again, pound two or use the raise hand feature if you are in favor of adoption of this. And at this time, I'm seeing no hands raised, so we will now move into those uh who would like to speak uh against. And now would be the time again, pound two or use the raise hand feature. Our first request is from Beverly. I will ask Beverly to unmute. If she would like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record. You are still on mute. I'll send you another unmute request. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Williams. My address is eighteen ninety six Cameo Court in Tucker, Georgia. So the gentleman mentioned about the millage rate. Uh I have a couple of questions. I reviewed my millage rate and what you're talking about as far as the first line and the last line. So I want you to go back over the first line on our tax form and also give me the opportunity to write my notes on the website, so that I can address what I need to address in person or in a letter. Second, I didn't know we was discussing the five-year millage rate tax digest history, because you didn't state that anytime in your presentation. So you need to go over that and explain that to us as well. That's all I have at this time, and I am not for this millage rate due to the fact that you had one on June the sixth, you had the second one on June the sixteenth, and half of the residents in DeKalb County was not aware. Now you having a third one, and you're going to do a final one, and I feel that it should be denied, because you did not get the opportunity nor the location of any of that time when I was trying to search for that information. Now, currently, on June the sixth and June the sixteen, you all have not put the messages or the transcribe um meeting to public, because Ms. Brown called me today to let me know it takes a month for that to be transcribed, and I can't see what you all talked about until after July the fifth of this year. And I have to go to a website to pull that information. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. And Mr. Sigler, without taking away time, it's my understanding the two uh public hearings she was referring to earlier. Weren't those actually the school system and not our DeKalb County?
Yes, I'm I I'm not sure if they were the school systems, but they were not our public hearings.
Okay, and the public hearings for us today were the one at ten o'clock, today at six P M, and then the one uh that Mr. Sigler said for the future. Our next request is from Jan Dunaway. I will ask Jan to unmute if she would like to uh start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jan Dunaway, forty six seventy two Felswood Drive, Stone Mountain. I appreciate, this is a good bit of information, and certainly better than um historically have gotten. I do have a thousand questions, which I can't address right now. I would ask the commissioners if they might, because you were so quick on the um link in the website for the, to find this presentation, if one of the commissioners could maybe send that out to us. And thank you, Jeff Rader, for sending, I get your e- your newsletter or else. I probably wouldn't have known about this. Couple of things I'd like to know. How did the cities impact our unincorporated county taxes, since they um I'm assuming are included in the total um revenue, and yet we don't collect as many taxes from them, because supposedly we don't give, they they pay for their own services. So that's one question. The other thing is on the freeze, and I appreciate it. I actually had to print out my last year's tax bill on this. The freeze amount is equal to the assessed value, or is it the assessed or the uh what's it called? Forty percent assessed value. Uh just, just curious on that, it's not clear. I also uh looks like that the hospital millage rate has gone up from twenty one. It would just be helpful to have all this information, just like Commissioner Rader said this morning. If we could have this information to go over before we get to this point. So I think that's all I've got to ask at this point.
Alrighty, thank you so much for your comments. Our next request is from Lawrence Miller. I'll ask him to unmute. If he would like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lawrence, well, my address is fourteen thirteen Amis Drive, I'm in unincorporated DeKalb. My question is very taken to your presentation. You uh spoke about the tax relief of the home average value of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the DeKalb County and the credits. You have not spoken anything about, with the increased value, what additional funds will be received per average household less, not including their exemptions for average houses in DeKalb, because it affects the tax rate going up. But if the property, my property taxes, my property value went up eighty thousand dollars. So I'm just questioning, like, I don't know how much of the DeKalb values went up eighty thousand dollars from twenty twenty one. So I'm just trying to understand, if our taxes are going up, why are they going up? My values are going up in this, in these, in these, in this rate, this high rate. I'm just, I just don't understand why we don't talk about those those numbers. We talk about just the money we say with the E H O's. Hello?
Yes, th- this is intended for you to make your comments, not not for uh uh interaction. Mr. Sigler will likely respond to many of the questions after uh all the questions.
If I may, though, I will just say that we were taking note of these questions. And um, you know, we will put back up the link to the website in my email information. So if you want to email me directly, you can, but we'll also be taking note of these and trying to incorporate those answers into, you know, any subsequent presentations that we have.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your uh comments. Madam Clerk, we, I I, if you could just advise, we do have another request. It is someone who has already spoken. It was my understanding, it was just one time, but I'll defer to you and Mr. Sigler. You're muted.
Okay, the person has spoken before.
Yes, uh the first speaker today. At this meeting.
Well, we still have nine minutes and one second left, so.
Okay, very well. We'll, we'll go ahead. I'm gonna go ahead and get Mr. Uh if you can mute.
One showing, or is there somebody else that wants to speak also?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we hear from everyone else first, and then if there's time remaining, we can go back to the first speaker.
Now, we did have a hand raised while I was speaking to the clerk. I saw that hand drop, though, so uh we'll do one more call. And then uh if there are no others, then we'll reach back to Beverly. Uh anyone else that would like to speak uh in opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature? Okay, we will go ahead and bring Ms. Beverly back. I will ask you to unmute. If you would like to start your video, you may. And again, uh please state your name and address one more time for the record. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Williams. I'm at address eighteen ninety six Cameo Court, Tucker, Georgia. You stated that the meeting that was held, and according to my in Tucker book, it stays important dates, June the sixth and June the sixteen was a millage rate increase hearing. Now, I'm looking at my Tucker book, and it's on page eleven. If you live in Tucker, you would have seen that, but it didn't give any information. So yes, you did have a meeting. Yes, it was supposed to be for the school and for the residents, and that was not privy to me or to the rest of the constituents. So you still need to address that as well.
Uh and I I can.
Me that, if you're telling me that my book that you submitted, if you're telling me the book that was submitted and was publicized to the residents is wrong, then state that.
Well, I I I don't know that for certain, but I can tell you that that was not our hearing. You know, we did not have any hearings on either of those dates.
Could it be the city?
Yeah, the school board would hold their own hearings on on millage rate increases um as well as the city. So if you, you know, it could have been the city of Tucker. I don't believe they were proposing a millage rate increase, but it was not the county government um holding those hearings.
Ms. Ms. Williams, if you send a uh a note to T J or myself um either here or the email he'll provide, we'll, you know, help get you, get plugged in and get you all the answers that you're looking for. And maybe get you a better explanation of of what, uh I believe it was probably the city of Tucker, but you know, what they're looking to accomplish. Would be happy to assist, okay?
Did you have any further comments, uh Ms. Beverly?
I do, because I already went to the city of Tucker. I went to the Board of Education in in Stone Mountain. They said it was them, and so you can talk to Ms. Brown, the superintendent, as well as Ms. Cloud. They can give you more clarity. But I still need my answers.
Right. Well, that i- if they confirmed that was them, then I would believe, believe them. But we will, uh as Ms. Williams say, you know, if you contact us, we'll get you all the information and confirmation on that.
Okay.
And thank you for your comments again. Uh we do have a couple more hands that were raised, and with time, we'll obviously honor that. So we have Suzanne Borchert. I will ask Suzanne to unmute if she would like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record. Oops, you're still on mute.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Borchert. I live at two, three, four, oh, North Lake Court in unincorporated DeKalb County. And mine is a question um about what was the average percent property value increase across DeKalb County? Someone mentioned there's one up eighty thousand. I calculated mine went up twenty-three percent. So I'd like to know, uh keeping the millage rate flat and not doing the rollback, when factored in with the increase in property value, what is that going to do to the revenue stream for DeKalb County? And how can you justify maintaining the millage rate and not rolling it back with such an increase of year-over-year property value?
Thank you so much for your comment and question. Our next request is from Michelle Anderson. I'll ask Michelle the unmute. If she would like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Anderson Johnson. I live at thirty-nine twenty-two Kingsbrook Boulevard. And um I am totally opposed to this millage rate increase. Um I feel that the property values are b- are based on a overinflated market and that um the real estate the real estate property and the values don't equal to what we're actually what our home values are equal to. I mean, this is just a overinflated market right now, and I don't think it's fair to the people who have decided to stay and live in DeKalb County to pay an increase in property value, and we're not in in property taxes, and we're not seeing anything especially in southwest DeKalb. Um where's the money going? The schools are a mess, and the the highest percentage of our property taxes are supposed to go to school. And we've all seen what's going on in the schools in DeKalb County. So I am totally opposed to this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for your comments. At this time, Mr. Sigler, Director Sigler, that exhausts the request for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Matowski. So um before we wrap up here, I was going to share my screen again and um put up the web address to get these misinformation as well as my email address. Give me just one moment to get there. All right, so hopefully it's showing my slideshow here. So um this is the address for uh the information, so this presentation as well as other information about the um proposed millage rates. It's just DeKalb County G A dot gov slash budget dash office slash budget dash information. So um if you just go to the county homepage as well, and go to, um I believe it just says government, and then hover over that, and you'll be able to choose budget, and then it will take you to um the budget homepage, and then you can get to this uh this link from there. Right? Um this is the property appraisal website. Again, if you have questions about your property values and how they change, um you'll be able to look at any of that information from their website. Uh the tax commissioner website is DeKalb Tax dot org. Um so if you have questions about how to pay your property taxes or what exemptions um are available, those are both available on your tax commissioner website. And finally, this is my email address. So um as I said, if you, if you email me directly, I'll I'll crime of best respond to your questions and um we'll also try to to incorporate more of that into uh future presentations. So it will be clearer to the public. And I I think finally, I'll just close out by saying that, you know, this is the start of the process. Um these millage rates are not, have not been adopted. Uh the purpose of having these public hearings is to hear from the public. So that I'll uh I'll wrap it up and let Mr. Williams, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, great, great presentation, uh Director Sigler. Um I do see Commissioners Cochran Johnson and I think it's our Commissioner Rader. They have anything to add? Continue the process. Mr. Cochran Johnson, anything you'd like to add?
Um yes, I I did want to say, I'm still not certain, honestly, the first question that Ms. Williams, Ms. Beverly Williams asked was answered. I uh multi-tasked, because I'm going through emails as I sit. But has this information been provided anywhere on the DeKalb County website, so that it's easily accessible to the general public for their own download and review?
It is available on the uh Budget Office website that I had the uh link up to just earlier. We did make some updates to the presentation for tonight, so I don't know if that updated presentation has been uploaded yet. I have uploaded it and submitted it for uh publication, so it's just a matter of whether or not that's occurred yet, but.
We'll also include responses to some of these questions that we're getting to, so it'll be.
Understood. And Mr. Sigler, I don't see personally, and correct me if I'm wrong. Has this presentation been sent to the members of the Board of Commissioners?
Uh the the update, not yet, but we will send that to you immediately.
Okay, and I'd just like to say to anyone who is receiving the District Seven newsletter, um we are going to do a special edition and send out, so that everyone has access to this information. And I'm sure my fellow commissioners will join me in doing so. I know that there's a lot of concerns, because we have a lot of issues. And when we talk budget, we don't talk about the issues that we're facing. Um as we so I I won't, I I want to choose my words carefully here. As we see rises in property values that affect our tax digest. So I want you to know that I'm very mindful of what is going on in the marketplace. I'm very mindful. We had the discussion today uh concerning the sale of homes primarily south of Memorial Drive. Over fifty-seven percent of those properties were not purchased, even if they were residential or one hundred by individuals. They were purchased by LLCs, private investors, as well as Wall Street. So we're very mindful of this and creating a rubric, so that no one in DeKalb County suffers adversely. So I will make sure that I disseminate information and that we stay vigilant on creating ways to ensure that you're not adversely affected, because even sitting here in my home, I have seen my property value increase um by about twenty percent. Um which affects our tax digest and our payable as well. So thank you all for joining us, and we'll do our best to ensure that everyone here receives this information as expeditiously as possible. And feel free to reach out to myself, uh if you have questions, uh as well as Mr. Sigler and others who are here to ensure that we answer your questions. And thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mr. Sigler, you can bring us home.
Okay, so um again, let me uh just conclude all um actually show you where on the website. You can get to this information, so. there. So this is the county homepage. So it's just dekalbcountyga.gov. Might look a little different on your smartphone, but if you're on a desktop, this is what it'll look like. And if you go to government and then departments and budget, that brings you to this homepage about the budget. And then if you click on the left-hand side here, the budget information, this is where the agenda item for this as well as the presentation. And this is the presentation from this morning. The presentation tonight should be uploaded shortly. But this is where you'll be able to to get to that information. And again, if you'd like to email me, my email address is TJ Sigler, S I G L E R at dekalbcountyga.gov. And keep an eye out on this page as well, and we'll continue to update it as new information is available. With that, I'll thank everyone for coming to the meeting tonight. And again, remind you that the next public hearing is July 12th at 10:00 AM. So if you'd like to participate in that, that'll also be held via Zoom at 10:00 AM. So thank you and good night.